Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Krista, kindly call roll call.
Gladstone.
Here.
Mollay.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Valente.
Here.
Toddhill.
Here.
Axtell.
Here.
Taggart.
Here.
Marshfield.
Yes.
Vernal.
Yes.
Isel.
Yes.
Haynes.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Ellis.
Yes, here.
Davis.
Here.
Wilson. Kosier.
Here.
Layton.
Here.
Seta.
Please join us in the invocation by Mr. Marshfield and pledge to the flag, Mr. Taggart.
Dear Lord, we give you special thanks this day and we pray for a special blessing for this board and our 46,000 residents. We ask, Lord, for a special blessing for our department heads, for our dedicated employees, that they will serve this great county with a sense of pride, compassion, and togetherness in all they do each and every day. We pray that our towns, our county, our schools, our villages work together to keep our taxes as low as possible and yet be able to supply our residents with essential services in order to maintain healthy minds and bodies for our needy, our children, and our elderly. We pray for our service people, for our firefighters and medics, that they, in serving us, do so safely and return to their families in safety and joy. We pray for our elected officials on the national, state, and local levels, that they serve all equally and fairly. Take us under your protection, defend us from evil, and enrich us with all the good that we may prosper in freedom beneath an equal law. We pray all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberity, and justice for all.
Okay, approval of our last meeting's minutes. It was the organizational meeting held on January 5th. Were there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, they'll stand as submitted. Communications?
All communications have been referred to the appropriate committees.
Okay, Jess, is Mandy on?
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Merrill for approval of the floor.
Yes, it's my pleasure to invite Public Health Director Mandy Walsh to address us today. Mandy, the floor is yours.
All right, can you nod your heads so I know you can hear me? Good. So Tina just asked me to give a brief update on some COVID activities and what's going on. So last week's report, we had about 459, you know, new cases to report. Right now, the way this week is working, we're probably averaging about 40 cases a day. I would say last week it was like about 65 cases a day, and the week before that it was about 88 cases a day. In the last two weeks, though, we've had eight deaths. So we're still steadily doing case interviews and investigations. What you've probably seen in the media, though, is that New York State is migrating because of the surge and still the extensive number of cases that most health departments are still, you know, contacting and trying to reach quickly and keep up. You know, the contact tracing part has become more of a self-management option, and so this is really because when you have a disease, you know, certain types of diseases, and when you have, you know, certain types of variants that are highly transmissible, the transmissioning is happening so quickly that by the time some of the people that are in quarantine would be called, the idea of behind quarantine is to quarantine or people that might be exposed, you want to pull those people out of the community before they get sick to prevent further illness. But with a variant that is highly transmissible, quickly transmissible, and backlog in cases, by the time you reach someone that's in quarantine, it may be too late because of the fact that you're trying to backtrack and find them, and with the transmissibility, it is not viable use of, it wears out its usefulness. So now, you know, you're looking at people doing the self-management part. So if you are a contact of someone who's a case, you know, we have information on our website, the state has information on their website, you know, you're doing more of a self-management, you're watching yourself if you start to become ill, you know, the idea is that you go get tested. So that's, you know, that's what's going on in play. But in the meantime, we're still, you know, doing case calls for those that are reported. We have a portal, but we have a lot of home testing, there's a lot more testing available to people so that they can know kind of right by the minute with rapid antigens, you know, if they're positive. There are, we obviously have, you know, places where people are required to get, you know, laboratory results that are confirmed for your employment or for other reasons, there are other protocols in place, but I can tell you that, you know, everyone that we have knowledge of, we are still doing case calls. We have New York State case investigators that are making calls, our staff are making calls. But right now, because of the fact that we do have a lot of self-management and we do have folks that probably might be doing a home test but maybe not reporting it, but doing, you know, following some of the rules, you know, we encourage everybody right now is not the time to, you know, you really should be wearing your mask because you have, you know, people in various states of infectiousness, possibly recovering, possibly, you know, you really don't know, and I don't, wouldn't be able to tell you who all is positive because not everyone is reporting, you know, their home testing, where it's not being reported quickly because there's a backlog in some of the lab data coming through. So we highly encourage people to continue with their, you know, if you are ill, you need to stay home. You don't want to go to work or anywhere and potentially get someone sick with any disease, especially, you know, with some of these COVID variants. You want to wear your mask because you don't know who potentially could be recovering or maybe not know that they are sick or they have mild symptoms, or maybe they, you know, they might have tested a little too early. The idea is that if you've been exposed, ideally you should wait, you know, that, you know, day three through five, you know, five days is kind of the ultimate to really know if you're positive, because some people, they find out they're exposed, they test a little or too early, they're negative, and then later they start to have symptoms. So, you know, we recommend that they get tested again because some folks are a little bit too soon for it to be registering. So the other thing that we encourage, obviously, is people that have been vaccinated to be boosted if they're eligible, and, you know, if you haven't been vaccinated, to consider being vaccinated. We are still running clinics, we have a state clinic, we've been running clinics with, in conjunction with New York State, this is, we're on week four. We just did a round, we did Sydney, Stanford, and Hancock, and now we're back to Sydney for our second round. That'll be Friday and Saturday, that's from 11:00 to 7:00, and then the following week we'll be in Stanford again, 11:00 to 7:00, Fridays and Saturdays, and then back to Hancock. So we are doing pediatrics at that clinic, 5:00 to 11:00, we are doing anybody 12 and over, we are giving first doses, second doses, booster shots. So, you know, if you, and we have, we do have a registration, but you also can walk into those clinics. So, you know, we encourage people to help us continue to get the word out. We've had, we've done a lot of advertising for those clinics, we still have our Thursday clinics where we're giving Moderna booster shots, we're also doing first and second doses for that as well. And we do anticipate probably doing a few additional pop-up clinics to pick up either people that need their second dose or some of the pediatric people that may come into our clinics this week that would still need their, also their second dose. So, you know, that's some of the activities that we're doing right now, but again, you know, I can't reiterate enough that, you know, the idea is that you really don't know who might be sick or who isn't, or who, you know, so you want to, when you're going into a public locations or places where there's, there are lots of people, and again, it's sort of the unknown, you want to wear your mask, you want to use that hand sanitizer or wash your hands, avoid touching your face, because, again, I only know the cases that we know about, I'm, we're only aware of that, we are still tracking clusters. So when we do see multiple cases or issues happening in the community, we will give education and try to mitigate that so that we don't have more of a spread, that is one of our focuses. You know, we are, we still are available, working with the schools, but a lot of the schools are doing, are having to do some of their own monitoring because of some of the, you know, with the contact tracing, New York State contact tracing system is no longer taking contacts. We're still doing cases, but the contacts, that's the point, a lot of the contacts are not officially in a system, so the self-management is really critical, but that's why we want everybody here, you know, to be really, really mindful of the fact that we are still in a high level of cases. We run about two and a half to three weeks behind the downstate, so when the governor talks about, you know, cases declining, we are starting to see a decline, but we are not to the point where Nassau County and some of the more metropolitan areas maybe were hitting a couple of, you know, weeks ago, we still run a little bit behind them, and upstate New York is still having, still seeing a lot of cases, there's a lot of hospitalizations. So we just, you know, I just want to make people aware that it's still here, we are still monitoring, you know, the cases that we're aware of through the laboratory systems and the testing portal that we have set up so that we can, if people report their home tests, we can monitor that. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Mandy, on the PCR test or the rapid test that you do, can you tell the difference between COVID and the flu?
So what you're looking at, these are different tests. So some people, when they go to the doctors, the PCR test is, it's looking for viral DNA. So that's sort of like the gold standard for COVID. But when some people go to the doctor's office, and a lot of this has to do with, you know, how insurance is billed too, they do what's called a viral panel. So they actually run a multitude of tests for people, some folks. So they're running a flu panel, a COVID panel, they might be checking for other respiratory diseases that come up. So when you're going to the doctor's office, you may see a battery of things that are being run in the background that you don't know about, but what you're aware of is what you're positive for. So if you are going to the doctor's office, a lot of times the practitioners are running a panel because they're not just looking for COVID, they're looking for other viral illnesses, including flu. If you're going to one of the testing sites, it's specifically testing for COVID. So when you get a PCR test, it's looking for that, the viral DNA of the coronavirus. If you're doing a rapid antigen test, it's looking for, it's, again, it's looking for that, the presence of that antigen in your system that you've come in contact with that disease. It's very specific to COVID. So those rapid tests are just looking at COVID-specific. If you're going to be, like, again, if you go to a doctor's office, what you're not seeing is they probably are taking a swab and then they're running a multitude of tests.
So do we have an outbreak of the flu this year?
I'm sorry?
Do we have an outbreak of flu this year?
We are seeing flu, yep. Typically, flu season starts usually, you know, in most years, you know, around November is when we start to see kind of cases, the uptick, and then it runs through December, January, February. So yes, we do have a lot of people with flu. It's running, we're seeing a little bit more, I think the last state report was that the flu cases were a little bit higher this year than last year, but I'm not surprised because of, you know, last year we were still sort of shut in. We had a lot more masking restrictions, really, really severe restrictions, and this year you don't. So there's lots of other respiratory illnesses, including flu, out there in the community. We're seeing a lot of RSV, and that's big, especially in the pediatric community, but you're also seeing adults with RSV as well. So yes, we do have flu, we are seeing, we're seeing a lot of flu A right now, but we do have a few Bs.
Mandy, I have a question. Are there a lot of school, are most schools in session, or are there any schools that are going remote at all?
Right now, I think most of the schools are in session. There, we did have a couple of schools that were, you know, they started to do some remote right before the holidays, and I think we had one school that after the holidays decided to take at least the five days just to see if there was, you know, just to see if that would cut down on, you know, some of the cases. But all the schools right now, to my knowledge, are in session.
And are they receiving those at-home test kits?
So they received a shipment of test kits, a lot of those kits are going directly to the Bozies, and then they're being distributed out. And New York State, it really ebbs and flows depending on the supply chain of what is available and what types are available. So New York State internally, we receive messages about what types of testing is available, what's coming for schools, what they have to adjust and switch to, because it's really a huge supply issue in the United States. It's a real supply and demand with some of the testing, and of course, with everyone utilizing home tests. So some of the schools have home testing, then they also have other testing. It's still an antigen test, it's just a different, it's a different brand, it's either a Binax Now or some other variety that the schools are using in-house, you know, to do the testing there. So, so yes, they do have some access to the home testing kits, it's sort of a backup, but then they also have the ability to receive antigen testing through other suppliers and through some of the state chains.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Mandy, I had a couple people ask me, have you seen an increase specifically in Delaware County of cases of myocarditis? Forgive me if I pronounce that wrong, but what, the reason I'm asking is, the parents of a couple teenagers were very reluctant to get the booster because they have heard that there has been a significant increase of that heart issue because of the vaccine and the booster. Are you aware of an increase in Delaware County?
In Delaware County right now, no. I think, you know, some of the data, it takes a while too for that, to look into that, especially when you look at when some of the, you know, pediatric vaccines started, but right now we are not, there's not a huge note in that, we're not really noting a big state note of that either, but in myocarditis, I think is what you were trying to say.
What?
Yeah. We haven't seen, we haven't seen that here, and we haven't noted anything, you know, no state data right now has made a big note of that.
Myocarditis.
Is that what it is? Myocarditis, okay.
Myocarditis.
Are there any other questions for Mandy?
I'd like to suggest, if we can, next time she gives a report that she does it in person, can we do that?
I'm not sure if she's comfortable with that. Jeff?
Franklin is remote on their seventh and older, because they're having, teachers aren't coming in.
Oh, currently?
Currently, yes. The younger kids are going, but the seven through 12 is being remote this week. It started Friday and it's going right through this whole week now.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mandy? I know she has a call coming up.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you very much, Mandy.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Tina, can I just say something quick? So in response to your question about the myocarditis in children with the vaccine, I would urge them to contact their pediatrician or doctor. Managing three of the primary care clinics for Bassett, it's, it's something that they're looking at, but I would urge them to talk to their pediatrician, because it's, as Mandy said, not widely reported at all.
Thank you.
And I actually advise them to do that also, so, but thank you, Betty.
Okay, are there any standing committee reports? I know Mr. Marshfield has one.
Yeah, I do. Last time I updated this board on our ARP committee was in October, so I'm here to tell you from November to present what we've done and so forth. I think one of the important things is, and I've been asked by a couple supervisors, when it was the interim final rule, now we're in the final rule, it was just issued a week or two ago. Towns and counties can spend their funding on anything if you've received under $10 million. Okay? So to clarify it, I sent our consultant, that was my interpretation, and I said, can a municipality under $10 million buy a truck with this? And they said absolutely they can.
Wow.
And I know that was the interest of a couple different towns.
Well, we have to submit something by April.
But, but in order to do that, when you submit your quarterly report in April, you have to go in there and check you want a standard allowance. That means they will give you lost revenue calculation up to $10 million. Towns, no problem, when, when none of us are, the county's at eight and a half, so we're good with that, too. But you have to, when you file your quarterly report, which is due the end of April, you have to check off this standard allowance. In other words, you're wanting this to be able to spend it on anything.
We can spend it on anything. We can spend it on anything.
That's right, right, without any questions. And if you're over $10 million, which none of us are, the old interim rule regulations come into effect.
Wayne, so when that occurs, we got a portion this year and a portion next year. Truck costs, both portions. How do we, do we do that next year, or do we do half the truck this year?
If you've already, if anybody's already spent something, I can't answer that question.
Haven't yet.
But if you haven't spent it, you can spend it on anything.
Coming in July. Right. This year.
I think it's a...
After April?
So if you order a truck, by the time you have to pay for it, the money will be, because the truck's going to be a year or two out.
That's fair enough.
Thing is, when you go in there, check off the standard allowance thing.
Thank you.
And...
That makes it easy.
Pardon?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I know you were the one that was asking, so.
Yep.
So anyway, in November, emergency services accepted bids from an issued RFP for backup county ambulance services. The successful bidder was AMR, and with a bid price of $1.9 million a year, less collected revenues, whatever they're going to be. Our ARP committee spoke at length with EMS Director Hood about the proposal and requested that AMR send representatives to talk to us at our December meeting. AMR sent two representatives to our December meeting, and we discussed billings, audits, stationing of ambulances, staffing, et cetera. Between our county finance committee and the ARP committee, a funding mechanism should be completed. And mind you, whatever we come up with is going to come to this board for your approval, like you had done on a previous resolution with the IT money and work initiatives and things like that. You're going to have another resolution come before you if the committee accepts it, and we're, we will probably talk, we will talk about that at our February 15th meeting. In January, we spoke to two cooperative extension, Cornell Cooperative Extension representatives about their proposal of $500,000 to help farmers in Delaware County. This would assist our farmers and provide them with funding for projects designed to improve operations on the farm that may not have been otherwise possible due to the economic challenges of the pandemic. This funding was approved by the committee, and Cooperative Extension will administer the program and set up guidelines for grants to the farmers. Also approved was a $45,000 engineering grant to the village of Delhi for upgrading the wastewater treatment plant in Delhi. This is an engineering grant. The plant is near capacity, and with 490 jobs at stake at Saputo, Friesland, Campina, and Sportsfield, this was considered an essential investment in our county's economic viability. Also approved at our January meeting was a $500,000 grant to assist in the restoration of the Soldier's Monument on Delhi Courthouse Square. This monument has needed attention for many years, and I'll bet you it's been at least 15, and the restoration will be spearheaded by the Building and Grounds Department. So we approved three different projects in January, the farmer $500,000, $4,500 engineering grant to the village of Delhi, and $500,000 for the restoration of the Soldier's Monument. We, somewhere here, I had...
Are they going to have someone come in and take the monument down?
Whatever, whatever they decide, I don't know what, you know, I would think they're going to have to get an engineer on the case and...
Professional.
Professional. Right? I don't know if somebody can answer that better than me, but...
Put them on each floor.
So far, the ARP committee has selected $4.3 million worth of projects out of our $8.5 million that we've been allotted, and we've had requests of $9.3 million, so we've had quite a few requests, and so we're moving along. Next meeting's February 15th, and we seem to have good meetings and good discussions, and we try to really, we had two cooperative extension employees attend our January meeting, and we had good discussion with them, and it sounded real simple what I said, but they gave us a six, eight-page document, and if anybody's interested in them, I'd be glad to get you a copy. So, any questions, anybody?
Yeah, I have on the ambulance service.
Yeah.
This ambulance service is going to cover the entire county, correct?
Going to cover the entire county, and it's not meant to be the primary source of ambulance service for anybody. It's meant to be a backup.
Okay.
It's anticipated, there are going to be two ambulances and one fly car.
The reason I'm asking...
Two BLS ambulances and one ALS fly car. They're anticipating five calls a day from each ambulance. Whether that involves, I don't know. It was projected that this annual contract of $1.9 million is going to bring in a minimum of $800,000 in revenue. There's been talk that it's going to bring in between $800 and $1.2 million. We don't know. The first year is going to be the most expensive, because you're starting up, there'll be a delay in billing and things like that.
Essentially what we went through in a town of Hancock.
AMR can bill the insurance companies for their services.
Right, but my taxpayers pay $250,000 a year for ambulance service. So I'm going to be asked why they have to pay that $250,000 when neighboring townships...
This is not meant to be a primary service for anybody.
Okay.
It's a backup. I mean, I contract all my services with Delhi, Waltham, and Downsville. I still pay those services.
It's not county money either, it's COVID money. As you know, we're doing it in Stanford.
It was given to the county.
And we're going ahead with all that.
Well, that money runs out.
Far as Stanford and Harper Shield and Courtrate, you need to go forward.
We're still going ahead with all that.
You got that. This will serve as a backup for your, this will serve as a backup for your ambulance service and hopefully release stress from your volunteers.
Wayne, where are those going to be staged?
Pardon?
Have they dedicated where they're going to be staging those ambulances?
No, other than they've said that there's a facility in Davenport and one in Hampden, and they talked about that, but their thought was to try to get it centrally located in the county. I don't know. This has to be set up by emergency services.
It's essentially going to be like a mutual aid call. You know, the tones go out, call for an ambulance in your community, your ambulance is busy, this one will go take care of it. So if you have a service already, that's great, but it's not always going to be free. And the other issue that's happened is that a lot of these volunteers are going to other townships to take care of those issues. going to other townships to take care of those issues there, and they're getting burned out in that situation.
Yeah, that's, that's what's happening with us.
What's happening?
That's why, that's what's happening in Hancock.
Sure.
We have the primary ambulance...
Right.
That's paid, then we have a backup to spend by volunteers. But we're also answering calls and deposit and Walton.
Exactly.
And, of course, you can't return service to anyone.
No.
You're not gonna do that.
Right.
But, it upsets our taxpayers to think they're funding an ambulance service for Walton and deposit and wherever.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
But I, I remind you all that this resolution's gonna come before this board, and you're gonna, you're, you're gonna approve it, maybe by itself or with something else, but...
Or not.
Um, you know, it's up to you people what you wanna do with it.
It's a much-needed service, I know that, countywide.
It is, but, but you also...
Great idea.
Also bear in mind, ARP's gonna bail out the program for three years. After three years, you know whose dime it is.
Mm-hmm. And I know that we've been doing ours initially, I think about five or six years now, and we put up the two hundred and fifty thousand as seed money, with the understanding that eventually it would drop down, but it hasn't dropped a penny. We still...
Never dropped.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so...
A year.
Yeah, so I, what I'm saying is, if you think that this is eventually gonna start paying for itself, I have reservations that it will.
No, I, I don't think they ever, ever intend on it paying for itself.
Mm-hmm.
There's a high projection that, that 1.2 million dollars will be collected out of the 1.9, so that's the nearest they ever figure it's gonna get to paying for itself.
To be a break in even, yeah.
Um, is that 1.9 gonna stay there? Maybe after three years, they may say, hell, we're so busy, we need another ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
So, the cost is gonna go up proportionally from 1.9 to whatever.
Mm-hmm.
I doubt they're gonna come back and say, God, we're so slow, we're gonna have to have one less ambulance, but I don't know.
That's not gonna happen.
What happens if, if they have more than those five calls per day for each ambulance, and they, they're still gonna honor those other two, seven, eight, twelve calls?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're just, they're just...
They're just saying on average, five per, per ambulance per day.
Yeah.
But if that escalates, they're gonna still do it for one night?
Yeah, they're gonna handle whatever they can handle, yeah.
Understood.
And the, the problem is, our volunteer services are dwindling, because there's the requirements on the volunteers, I mean, the training and all that they have to get to be a EMS person, or even a fireman, you know, forty hours a, a year, or however many times every two, three years, you know, for a volunteer position, is stressing the timetable. I mean, everybody wastes some of their own time. And this is what, you know, we've, we've been very fortunate as a county, as rural areas, to have volunteers that wanna serve and do serve and do a tremendous job.
But this, this 1.9 in no way...
Cover the county.
No, well, it's no way it's going to create a new facility anywhere in the county. They're gonna use what they have, or possibly, if a fire department has a bay they're not using, it could be stationed there.
Right.
But this is, they told us flat out, they're not gonna build a new facility anywhere to accommodate one of these ambulances.
Could, could we just make it clear that the proposal was for a three-year contract?
Yes.
1.9 for the first year, and then roughly about a million dollars each year for the next two years. But the request to the ARPA committee was for the first year. Am I, am I correct with that?
Not really, no, the, well...
Yes and no.
Yes and no. Actually, the three years they were, came to us for, they want the first year bad than worse, so they can get going, but you gotta think beyond the first year. Who, who's gonna, who'd...
That's, that's what I'm getting at, though, is...
The ARP's looking at it as a three-year project.
But it's one nine a year.
Less revenue.
Right.
Whatever that's gonna be.
Again, that's gonna take up all the ARPA money.
Well, no, what's, what, at finance, we discussed this, and we would, the finance committee would love to see a, you know, up to two million dollars, you know, for the ambulance services, no more than that of the money. Then the county would, you know, after six months, it hopefully will be, you know, you're getting some return on this money, on your investment by the claims and stuff. So, uh, one figure is, we could, uh, get eight hundred thousand dollars a year in claims back, so a 1.9 million dollar project would cost the county 1.1. And another person will put numbers in and said, well, your claims could be as high as 1.2 million. So, it would only cost the county seven hundred thousand dollars a year to have two full-time ambulances and a chase car.
I, I, I understand all that. My, my question is, and it's kinda leading into what Jerry's concern is, what do I...
Our total ARP money allotted to this county is eight and a half million. We, to date, have spent 4.3, so we've got 4.2 million left.
Yes.
To a, to a lot to something.
Right.
Geez, I shouldn't be saying all this, we're gonna get rammed with requests.
Oh, you are, you are.
But anyway, that, that's the way it is. We've got about half of it spent.
I, I understand that, but at some point, at some point, and that, and you were there, the primary discussion at the ARPA committee is, if we start this, it's never going away.
You ain't never gonna get rid of it.
It's never gonna go away. So, are we at, what, when do I tell the taxpayers that once the money's done, you're gonna foot the bill? Do you follow what I mean?
Yeah.
You don't, nobody's gonna answer that right now, but I just wanna put that out on the table. At some point, at some point, if this goes through...
Well, I think, I think the issue is, we have a problem in the county, we know we have a problem in the county, and the ARP money is allowing us to see money, we come up with our possible solution to get it started. It was something we're gonna have to...
And, just...
And this helps.
It...
In the end, the county's gonna do it.
It may turn into more than just the secondary service at some point.
Yeah.
Because there's, and everybody, I think, agrees that the volunteer service is, is dwindling. Why am I gonna get out of bed at three o'clock in the morning when it's ten below if, right, I, I know, but I just need these guys to hear that, too. So, you bring this up, this is gonna continue to drop because this is going to be...
Yeah.
Because we can't give an incentive to volunteers.
But it's gonna, it's gonna be exponential.
Right, that's right.
The problem is, we can't give incentives to volunteers. There is, I guess, a tax incentive for volunteer firemen off your taxes or something?
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred, okay, but I'm just saying, if you could benefit these volunteers that are given their time and effort for free, more of a monetary response, you know, so they, I mean, everything is money-driven, I'm sorry, no, I shouldn't say that, because there are volunteers out there that, that money's no question, you know, they'll put their time and effort into it. But we're, we, we are requiring the volunteers to, all this training, all this, you know, stuff for the ambulance service and the fire department, to be a volunteer.
In progress.
And I think, you know, the, and we've said at the board meeting before, somehow we've gotta make it worthwhile for these volunteers, or at least not worthwhile, at least show them that they are truly appreciated.
Mm-hmm.
And thank you is a great thing, but it all comes down to...
Nothing says thank you like money.
That's right.
You know?
Thank you is great, and this is something that the state hasn't come up with, and maybe the county's gotta do something, because if we don't, it is gonna be a total paid service, and eventually we'll have a total paid service fire department, which will really kill us.
Okay, so anyway, this board has to decide, this resolution will come before you eventually, so probably in the next couple months, so...
I did have a question on, um, I had heard that there was a request for IT upgrade here in this building and the county. I have, I'm watching the struggle with this thing here, we need it.
We, we allotted 2.6 million to IT.
Okay, I just want to know, that's, that's included in that money?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was last month.
Yeah, thank you.
Two months ago.
Yeah, well, I forget.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Marshfield on these meetings?
We thank you, Wayne, for doing a great job and putting the time...
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Are there any other standing committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Okay, the first resolution for today is resolution number nineteen.
I would like to bring this resolution up for the board to approve.
Second.
Twenty twenty-two budget amendment, designation of Delaware County as local sponsor for snowmobile grant planning department.
Questions? We do this annually.
It's yearly.
Okay, please call the roll.
Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number twenty.
I want to present the, uh, updated bed tax law for review and consideration.
Thank you. It's out of here.
Public hearing on local law introduction number thirteen of twenty twenty-two, Delaware County occupancy tax law for lodging establishments and short-term rentals, Department of Economic Development.
So, we'll hold a public hearing next meeting on the twenty-third of February at one o'clock. Questions on this, comments?
One of the interesting things that we did in the revision is allow for an increase in the number of members on the tourism promotion advisory board. We have seven currently, because our goal by the end of the year is to sort of expand our view of the county tourism industry, to take into account the fact that various sections of this county are quite different than others. Who's more recreational, like Hancock, who's more, uh, ski-oriented, winter-oriented, and we try and attract new members from these various areas that are currently underrepresented, and I think that's gonna make the money get spent more even.
And Dennis, you may correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but I believe when we first adopted this law several years ago, our anticipation was around two hundred, two fifty?
Oh, boy, yeah.
And I think we've already surpassed four fifty?
We're close to having a million dollars. I think, I think we have somewhere just north of four hundred and fifty thousand to distribute, after the disbursements to the individual, uh, owners, you know, collecting the tax, we give them five percent, we give money to the treasurer's office, we're administering and collecting, and even with all that, we still have over four hundred and fifty thousand.
Wow.
Which is why, in front of the tourism advisory board right now, is a proposal to help private businesses. Right now, it's only for non-for-profits, or it has to be funneled through a municipality, but allow for for-profit businesses to apply, get online behind, you know, non-for-profits the initial, and to help them add rooms, or to help them upgrade their building to meet sanitary code. So, we're, we're looking at a possible ten thousand dollar grant to people that wanna increase their capacity. We want, we wanna, we wanna first and foremost reward the lodging establishments who are doing all the heavy lifting, collecting all the money, and the rest of the tourism industry, but in that order.
Any questions for Dennis? Okay, is the voice roll all in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. So carried. I have not two prefiled resolutions, I'll waive rule ten without objection. Move on to resolution number twenty-one.
I bring this up in lieu for its adoption.
A second.
Correction of omitted taxes, real property tax services. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, the last not prefiled resolution is payment of the audit, resolution number twenty-two.
I bring this up in lieu for its adoption.
Payment of audit. Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Mullay?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuthill?
Yes.
Axteau?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Vernal?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Haynes.
Wake them up.
Scott?
It's a long day for George.
Ellis?
Yes.
Hinckley?
Yes.
Kozier?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Okay, I do have several committee appointments I'd like to go through. The Delaware County Deferred Compensation Committee, I'd like to appoint Supervisor James Ellis, Supervisor William Layton, Supervisor Art Merrill, and Supervisor Bud Gladstone. For the youth bureau, for a three-year term appointment ending December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, I would like to reappoint Dennis McKenna. The only other thing I have is that we have made copies and passed around the committee schedule, they're the same as last year, um, and the committee dates, our committee meetings.
I guess the question I have is, why, why wasn't that, the vote figured on the new census?
Because we, we have to go through that yet to determine how we're going to figure out what the votes are. We just got those...
Not, not that it's a big deal, but...
Yeah, because we have to do a local law, and there's a procedure that you have to go through that we're not ready to do just yet.
I, uh...
I, I don't know about that.
I've got Gladstone by two votes, so just make sure you keep at that, right?
Mr. Merrill?
Yes, I would like you to repeat what committee you just assigned, uh, put me on. Well, I missed the...
All the above.
Thank you.
You are on the deferred compensation committee.
All right. I missed that part of it.
We like to do that.
Pay attention.
Okay, does the board...
George, just stop.
Does the board have anything else they'd like to bring forward?
Financial finance meeting.
Oh, yes, there is this finance meeting. We'll hold it here, you want in the other room?
In here.
In here, please. Okay, stay warm, see you next month.